This is caucus session. We have one item on our own business this evening pertains to the public hearing we just had before the council meeting. We'll be acting on this this evening. Second reading of that. On our new business, we have eight items. I would like to request these be read by Ty Wolling, that's the county council.
Yep.
Okay, you're gonna start, we'll sign these in order here. A, Mr. Dragish, that? B, Mr. Morbe?
Yep.
C, Mr. Dragish. D, Mr. Morbe.
Yep.
I will do E. Mr. Dragish, you want to do F? And Mr. Morbe, you want to do G?
Yep.
And I will do H. Are there any other changes, revisions to this agenda as written this evening? Okay, if not, I will call this September something costing to order me, please stand up for flesh.
I'd like to be able to reply to the plan of the United States of America and to the other countries standing as well. One nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with liberty, justice, and the world.
Thank you, Mark. The court fees called a roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Costar? Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Tisch.
Thank you. Have you received the minutes from September 3rd council meeting under any revisions to those minutes?
I have none.
Okay, if not, they stand approved as written. Read communications, Mr. Dragish.
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Morbe?
No, it's been pretty quiet.
Okay. Mr. Reno?
I have one item from the Ohio Historic Preservation Office, and it relates to the audit that was performed a couple of weeks ago notifying the city that they've met all of the requirements for the certified local government performance evaluation, and just added some recommendations along with that. We did okay in our audit.
Okay. Mr. Portano?
I have no communication.
Okay, good. All right, number seven, under recognition of persons desire to speak before council, may I ask you?
No, no, no.
Sorry, report the, I'm sorry. I'm getting too fast behind myself here, I tell also. Mr. Dragish, anything on reports of your committee?
No.
No. Mr. Morbe?
Just to report the fire district, once again, there was a couple incidences at the Campfield Fair which were handled very professionally, and basically everyone went home safe, and that's the job of the fire district. We had help from surrounding communities, and so we're very proud of the fire district and what they do, what they accomplish, and of course, we're trying to get the new station built and manned and equipment in it, and you'll see that on the ballot this November. And if anybody has any questions, you're welcome to come to the fire district meeting, and we're approach one of the board members or the chief, assistant chief, and we're just asking for your support and getting this done, so.
Very nice. Mr. Morbe? Okay, Mr. Reno?
Yes, there was, as mentioned, eight items of legislation to deal with this evening, and I'll answer any questions as they come up if there's anything. Basically, they're all housekeeping items for the most part, and I've explained a lot of them in my memo, but if you have any additional questions on any of them, I'd be glad to address that. Other issues, the fall market is being held on the Village Green this Saturday. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., sponsored by the Junior Women's League. Everybody's well aware of the good news of the library, the awarded bids this past week, and they're having their official groundbreaking on October 3rd, that's a Friday, at 11:30, and that'll be on the library property. We currently have two civil service exams, actually, one of them's being administered this evening over at the middle school for police officers, and we closed out the application process for dispatchers last week, and that test will be next Wednesday. I also received a reminder from the regional chamber of the Good Morning Campfield event that'll also take place on Friday, October 3rd, and we have a representative from the Ohio Department of Transportation will be the keynote speaker, talking about the major improvement to 11 and 224 that's gonna take place and certainly have an impact on the city during that time. And lastly, one of the items that we've been going back and forth on the last couple of weeks is trick or treat, falling on a Friday, the 31st, removing the trick or treat hours to Saturday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The township is doing the same, as is the community of Poland, which, one of the reasons for the move is the, Campfield is playing Poland here at home on that evening, and there's quite a bit of band parents, football parents, active participants of that program that won't be available if they have their kids out on the streets on Friday, so we decided to make the move to Saturday, and as I say, the village, the community of Poland is doing the same thing, Campfield Township is doing the same, and we haven't heard from board members or city townships yet. That's all I have.
Okay, Joe. Mark?
Just a couple of things. The planning zoning commission members have begun, over the next couple of months, to review a comprehensive plan, some comprehensive plans from some other communities, and we're looking at, let's say, beefing up our comprehensive plan a little bit, and we're just kind of starting to dig into that over the next month or two. Mr. Morbe, you've asked a question a couple of times about putting a limit on a building permit, and I had done some research about how some other communities handle that, but then we found it in our own ordinance, in fact. So, under 1131-07-D, it's the time limit, it's stated as time limit, if a certification of zoning is issued for such work is not begun within a six-month time period from the date the zoning certification is issued, then such certificate shall be null and void, that's when it's issued. If the work contemplated by the zoning certificate is not substantially complete within 18 months from the date of the certification, then the certification is null and void.
18 months, you said?
18 months.
Okay.
So, if you wanna noodle over that a little bit, and let us know if you want any changes to that, but we do have, I know you asked.
Yeah, and the only, the reference was to that home on Neff.
Yes.
That's been under construction for quite a while.
Yeah, that property owner has been cited in the Barris Court, some steps have already begun to remediate that problem, and I think some, look for some more steps pretty quickly there.
Yeah.
Third, you're gonna see some revisions to our political sign ordinance as we wrap up the year. The Ohio Supreme Court has, some time ago, made a determination relative to the length of time and some other issues, and that is the way we have enforced our ordinance since that ruling, but we're gonna clean up the ordinance to reflect that now. There's been some assessment questions that Joe and I have worked through relative to property maintenance issues in terms of assessing equipment costs, et cetera. We can do that, and we are gonna do that, and then I'll be happy to take any questions you have beyond that.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, now we'll do stuff here, so. All right, under recognition of persons desire to speak before council, may I ask you to step to the floor to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, and keep your comments as brief as possible. Vicki Palmer?
My name is Vicki Palmer. I live at 125 Callahan Road, and I'm here tonight to discuss the intersection of Route 46 and Callahan, and how when you are coming up Callahan, you cannot see the traffic coming from the east side of the green towards you due to bushes and trees. And I took pictures so that you guys can see. Don't mind. This is at the intersection?
Yes.
Can you see now? Okay, this is at the intersection. This tree right here blocks all of the oncoming traffic from the green. You cannot see any traffic coming. That, I mean, I did a close-up shot, and that one, there is actually a car coming. And you cannot see it, especially on a cloudy day. Like, this day, you could kind of see the reflections through the leaves, but you really cannot see the cars coming. I did a video as well, and on my way here tonight, I stopped where it beams, and did a side shot. This tree is the one that really needs to just be brought up. You don't have to cut it down, just shore it up.
Yeah.
It is on city property, because there's a sidewalk there, and it goes around, so that is city property right there. That is the city street, should be shored up, and then these are the attorney's landscaping things, those should be brought down more or less.
Could you show Joe?
I should.
Yeah, so that he knows, Joe Reno.
Uh-huh.
Because I think those are some great suggestions, and that would certainly help.
That's the side shot of it. This tree right here is the one that needs to be just brought out. Yeah.
What was the landscape in these?
Um, it's, right here.
Is that brush here?
Yeah, just the brush. It's on the attorney's property there. It's just got like stones, and it just has beams going through it, and so if that is just brought down, then you can, then you can see. But you really cannot see coming out of there, and...
We've discussed this issue before, and we had the engineer go out and physically measure it to make sure it met all the ODOT criteria, which it did, but I, there's certainly an argument that there are issues with the trees and the vegetation there. That's what some, so far, guys could address.
Easy fixes there, too.
Very easy.
Yeah, they're easy fixes.
Did that take care of this?
Thank you, Vicki, for that affirmation. That's very helpful.
And Joe, thank you for moving Halloween. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Vicki, for that affirmation. We'll take care of that for you.
Thank you very much.
Dave Taylor? Dave here?
Evening, Joe. Ladies. My name's Dave Taylor. I live at 35 Kirk Street, and I just wanted to address 33 Kirk Street. I know we talked before in the past, just kind of see where we were, touch base with that. I know there had been issues with finding the bank that had the property with that, and after, the day after the last meeting, my wife had looked up the information if we had that drop off, let her address the each of yourselves, as well as the fire chief and Joe, and to see if you had had any headway, or see if there was any new information as far as that property.
Joe, can you give them the answer on that?
I think I can report, I know that the fire chief has been trying to pursue getting access back into the property again so that he can evaluate it, and whatever he determines to be the case that he can.
Getting to that property, there is a number on the door on the side of the home?
Right, and that's why I say, he's made contact, I don't know, you know, today whether he's gotten permission or not, but at our last staff meeting, that's, that was basically the only hole up that, our ordinance requires a letter from the fire chief to determine whether the house is habitable or not, and whether it can be demolished or not.
All right, very good. Yeah, just kind of curious about that, because it is my understanding that as of October 14th, that home is supposed to go up for sheriff's sale.
Yeah, which, if that happens, it still doesn't stop our process. Whoever inherits that property would have to deal with the demolition, or, you know, whatever the outcome happens to them.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, that's, that's been a priority, Dave, and I mean, yeah.
Maybe just try and touch base, see what's, what's happening.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it, yeah.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
Frank McKeon?
I'm Frank McKeon. I reside at 220 Vending's. This is some short notes. At the last council meeting on September 3rd, council voted to send two proposed charter amendments to the Board of Elections to verify signatures. The number of signatures was verified as adequate, and the city was informed they will be on the ballot. For the record, I would like to elaborate on how this came about. I personally circulated the petitions for two charter amendments. In a nutshell, the first opens the floor to any final vote in the business portion of meetings, allowing residents to participate in the decision-making process. The second requires the finance director, police chief, zoning inspector, and public utilities to attend meetings and report on their areas of responsibility. They are well-paid by the citizens of Campfield, and we are entitled to know what's going on. Citizens expect transparency and accountability. Both of these issues limits to any person to three minutes to comment on the questions, to comment or ask questions. These petitions were submitted to the clerk of council on July 16, 2014. On August 4, 2014, the recommendation to the city manager was, and I quote, "The clerk should not submit the same to the Houghton County Board of Elections," unquote. Basically, the reason given was that only council can make the rules or changes to the rules governing the meeting. In other words, we make the rules, and we can change the rules, regardless of any petition initiative. What happened to the principles of democratic government? I felt this was wrong. At that point, at my own personal expense, I hired the services of a law firm that specializes in election law. After some, after some investigation, on August 7, 2014, my attorney replied to the city stating, and I quote, "Be advised that it is well-established in the case law that a city council cannot supplant a citizen-initiated, citizen-initiative, a citizen-initiated charter amendment proposal based on the substance of the proposal," end of quote. In other words, the attempt to keep these amendments from the ballot was wrong and illegal, not to mention unethical. It was, I repeat, it was illegal. This is our city government in action. So, on September 3rd, council voted to submit the petitions. I might add, one council person voted against this, in other words, violate the law. Is this a common practice of council? Should you not support the law? In conclusion, Mr. President, it's a sad day when the city administration moves to subvert democratic processes to keep issues they do not like off the ballot. It's a sad day when an individual has to pay for legal counsel to obtain their right to put an issue on the ballot. Campfield politics have hit a new low under this administration. It's a black mark on this administration, and will, in my opinion, tempt this administration's credibility and integrity through their term. I hope the citizens of Campfield will get some of these issues. Thank you for your time.
I'd just say, I'd like to make a comment if I could, literally. And just, these are just comments that I have, and Frank paints a very black picture of how government works or doesn't work, whatever, but it's worked for 100 years in this city, and there's no reason to change it. First of all, a while ago, I asked Patty in front of Frank, in front of the council, how many people come in and ask the talk to the law director, or have questions for the finance director, and I think Patty, your answer was none. So, the doors are open, folks. I mean, you need information, you come and you talk to the city manager who you hired to run the city, and if he doesn't get that information for you, why then you go to a city councilman, and you raise the concern. That's our job. You elected us. You elected us as a city official to run your business. So, now we're gonna throw Robert's Rules of Order out, and we'll be here till midnight, and nothing will get accomplished, because that's what'll happen. That's when you don't have order, that's what happens. Yes, Frank, we did not want to deviate from Robert's Rules of Order, and that's why we didn't send it the first time, and, but we'll see. It's on the ballot. I don't personally care for it. I will vote no for it, and I'll tell my neighbors, too, and I'll tell everybody that I can, and I'll give them my side of the story, too, and that's your prerogative as well. But when you come and you paint this black picture that we're corrupt and everything is bad with us, that, that's insulting. And the other thing that's insulting is that you elected me to do this job, and then turned around and put term limits on us. So, here I am, and I'm, I think I made $100 a meeting, Joe? Is that, is that what I get, something?
Is that?
I'm not doing it for financial gain. I'm doing this to give back to the city that I love. And so then the voters say, well, we don't really appreciate you, we voted you, but now you're out, and put term limits on us, and that hurts. That hurts, and it hurts someone that's in my position, that's given his time and talent to help the city, to give back to the city, and so I think, Frank, you're really, you may think you're doing good, but I don't think that way, so, and I'm gonna stop there.
Let me just clarify on the record, just, you know, the reason they were initially rejected was because of the procedural conflict we now will have between our rules of council and the charter. Okay? It wasn't as though we just said, we're gonna withhold these because we want to withhold them. It creates a problem, and a problem that'll have to be solved down the road. In reviewing it further, and in speaking with Frank's counsel and other counsel who do municipal work, it became apparent that we probably should just submit them and deal with the inconsistency down the road, which is what we're having to do with the first set of charter amendments. So, it wasn't as though we decided to reject them. We took a look, and it just created a conflict with the chart, between the charter and the rules of council, as I had advised council, so, just to be clear.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark. Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Morbe. I appreciate your comments on that. Mr. Minkler?
Good evening. I'm Robert Minkler, 81-1 Montgomery Lane. Tonight, I kind of want to speak on maybe a couple matters. I spoke my piece at the last, at the last meeting on the charter amendments, so we know where I stand on that. But the other goes back to my daughter, who first spoke to you, the first one to speak this evening, about the intersection. And I think I had mentioned that one time being up here about the problem there, and Mr. Reno replied about it meeting the ODOT standards. And I look back over the times that I have spent here, and the projects the city has worked on, and the engineering and the standards that are followed are always the minimum standards. We make sure we meet the minimum standards. Why do we have to meet the minimum? What's wrong with going a little extra? As an engineer, and I know Joe can appreciate this, the minimum does not always satisfy the situation, and so I would just urge in the future that when we do any projects, and we're looking at ODOT standards, city standards, or whatever, we make sure that the minimum is really going to be adequate, or do we need to take that little extra step? It may need some more money to go that extra mile, but it's needed because the minimum is inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Andy Scrobola?
Good evening. My name is Andy Scrobola. I live at 400 Milbrook Street in Campfield. You know, I was listening to Mr. McKeon here tonight, and I'd just like to pose a couple of situations. Does everybody know that when you walk into this room for a council meeting, that's sitting right over there on the table, is an agenda with the items to be dealt with by the council tonight? Surely, if you don't, but I'm sure, I saw a number of you, including Mr. McKeon, pick one of those up, and I sure, I'm sure that you took a look at what was on the agenda, Dave did, and Bob, and surely Frank did, and you know what's interesting for me is that this petition for charter change to allow discussion before those items are dealt with by the council, that petition requests time to speak before those things are dealt with, but guess why? Mr. McKeon just had his opportunity to do that. I didn't hear him speak against any of them, which apparently indicates he has no, no need to discuss any of the items on there, and that particular procedure has existed for, for years and years and years since the charter was put together. What is it in his position that he wants to be done differently? I can't appreciate that. It's already here for everybody to take advantage of. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm the law, so I understand what his petition is all his charter amendment's all about to begin with, but for me, I would vote no for that as well. And as far as the administration people coming to this meeting, I don't know, is Mr. McKeon willing to pay for their overtime, or their other expenses to have him here tonight? They work eight hours a day. When they come to a meeting that is over and above the time they spend on a daily basis, the city is obligated by ordinance to pay them overtime. I don't know. Are we willing to pay that additional money, and for what purpose? There's Mr. Reno, sitting right over there. He has all the information that anybody might want to have, maybe not in total detail, but all I have to do is, when they stand up here like I am now, ask them what it's all about. In eight years on council, I don't know if I saw one or two people ever ask him about what the finance director is doing, how they're doing, and guess what? We invite people to come to the discussions we have on budget every year. Mr. McKeon showed up once in eight years that I was on council. It's there, and I'm sure, Frank, you appreciated being there that night. It was interesting, wasn't it? But you were there. I don't know what that need is for as well. Enough of that. One other point. Here, I just experienced something that maybe others in the community are experiencing. Here, a number of years ago, we put together what's called a community aggregation plan with the electric company and the gas company, which says that the city negotiates a really good rate for both the electric and the gas, and it's a really good rate. It's lower than what you would ordinarily pay yourself. Well, there was a transfer of aggregate gas suppliers this past May, and some of you, if you have looked at your gas bill, may have noticed that, others may not have. There is difficulty with the company that delivers our natural gas, inasmuch as they didn't recognize in its entirety the automatic transfer from their company to the newly contracted company. So, you may be paying right now to Direct Energy when in fact, you should be paying to volunteer supply, and the rate at Direct Energy is much higher, it's almost double. So, I make a strong suggestion that people look at their bills to make sure that they are paying the appropriate price to volunteer. Is that not right, Joe?
Very good point, Andy, yes.
Okay, so if we can make that known to the community, be very good, because otherwise you're going to spend a lot more money this winter. And the reason why I say this tonight is, during the summertime, you don't spend and use very much gas, so your bills are low, and you may not be recognizing what that large difference is yet, but you will be come, any billing done this month and in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. So, what, what's the amount we're paying right now? The city's got?
.597, I believe, per hundred, per thousand cubic feet.
That's a medium.
And we've just negotiated for October, or November through, I forget, through the next term.
Okay.
It's at a lesser rate, and as Andy had pointed out, Direct Energy, who was our previous supplier, their rate had jumped up to over 1.17 or something like that for a main cubic feet, and there are residents that I'm getting calls now that thought they were in the city's aggregation program, and thought they did everything properly to stay in that program, are getting bills at this higher number, so we're trying to get that corrected. We had this happen a year or so ago, if you recall, where somehow or other...
So I anticipate if there's a large number of those out in the community, as Andy had mentioned, we need to look at those bills, make sure that the gas supplier, if you want to be in the city's program, is volunteer energy, not Direct Energy.
All set.
And if not, or if not, contact the city. We'll get them switched back over to the city program and hopefully pick up any losses that they may have had in that interim.
Right, Joe. Thank you.
Andy, just for the record, you may also go to the website and we have the agenda on the website prior to the meeting. So a couple days beforehand, you have questions, you look at that and then you go to Joe or you go to one of us with the concern. So the information's out there.
Just one more comment on that, too. I believe if it's not on the website, she'll have it for you at least three days in advance, correct? We know what the judge is going to be pretty much.
Try to get the agenda out on Friday.
Friday before the meeting. So if you want to come in here before then and get the agenda, you can have it, as Andy mentioned, but get it before, well before the meeting, too. Have a good sense of what we're discussing the night of the council meeting, well ahead of advance. Okay? So we'll, we'll know. Okay, we're going to move on to item number eight, old business. This would be action on after our public hearing we had here just before the council meeting. And I ask for provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield. I move to the council to dispense with the requirement of full reading of proposed ordinance and authorize by its title only, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Morbey, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Mr. Dragish?
Item A. Yes, under new business, old business.
Oh.
Old business, A, I'm sorry. An ordinance providing for the revocation of conditional use permits by creating a new section 1151.02 in the classified ordinances of the city.
Very good. You have a second. Second. Mr. Morbey, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And the number is?
2014-42.
Thank you very much, Andy. Okay, now, item number nine, our new business. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second. Second. Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And the number is?
2014-42.
Thank you very much, Andy. Okay, now, item number nine, our new business. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second. Second. Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And the number is?
2014-43.
Thank you, Patty. Item B. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second. Second. Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And as provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of full reading of proposed ordinance and authorize by its title only, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Morbey. Okay, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Morbey?
No, that's Donnie.
I'm sorry. How about Donnie?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance modifying certain bonding requirements for the City of Canfield employees.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morbey, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. The number is?
2014-43.
Thank you, Patty. Item B. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And the number is?
2014-43.
Thank you, Patty. Item G. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And as provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of full reading of proposed ordinance and authorize by its title only, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Morbey, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Thank you. Now, Mr. Morbey, you're up.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance creating the North Broad Street Safety Upgrade Phase III Fund and I move for passage.
Thank you. Do a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion?
In the actual print, upgrade is spelled wrong and please make that correction. That's an upgrade.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And the number is?
2014-44.
Item C. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And the number is?
2014-44.
Item C. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And as provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And as provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize by its title only, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Morbey, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Dragish?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance creating the Federal OBI Task Force Grant Fund FY 2015. Move for passage.
Thank you. Do a second.
Second.
Mr. Morbey, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And the number is?
2014-45.
Item D. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second.
Second.
Mr. Morbey, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Thank you. And as provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize by its title only, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Morbey?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Canfield, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014, and I move for passage.
Thank you. Do a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And the number is?
2014-46.
Thank you, Patty. Item G. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second.
Second.
Mr. Morbey, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And as provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize by its title only, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, thank you. Okay, this is mine. We have an ordinance providing transfers to various funds. I move for passage of this ordinance. Second by Mr. Dragish? Okay, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, thank you. And the number is?
2014-47.
Okay, item F. As provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read and have a second.
Second.
Mr. Morbey, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. And as provision of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of a full reading of proposed ordinance and authorize by its title only, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Morbey?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
No, no.
Yes.
Yes, I have you.
That's right. Thank you. And an ordinance approving the replay of Canfield City Lot 2954 at Lake Wobegon Drive by ASM Investments Incorporated.
Thanks, Mr. Dragish. Do a second. Mr. Morbey, discussion? There be none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.